You are watching Access LaPorte County on Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 21st meeting of the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can get more information for this meeting by going to www dot access laporte county dot org.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, January 17th, 2024. Mike Seitz, would you start us with the pledge of leeches?
Pledge of leeches.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And actually, I think I gave the wrong date because I was looking at something different. It is Wednesday, August 21st, 2024.
I didn't think it was January.
I know, I apologize. Pledge, roll call.
Commissioner Graham Rosso.
Present.
Commissioner Mazinski.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Okay, consider agenda.
Madam President, I would like to add to the agenda, add the fire door in Small Projects Building at Fairgrounds, where you want to put that new business maybe?
No, put it under 9A. We're just going to add it to 9A.
9A, okay. And also want to delete 11D, Consider Decommissioning Agreement and Road Use Agreement for the solar project. And I would make a motion to accept the agenda as corrected.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of August 7th, 2024 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consideration of claims. We're going to do payroll first.
Payroll, Commissioners, for the period ending 8/9/2024 is $1,541,296.49.
Motion to approve payroll as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Operating expense.
Operating expense claims in the amount of $1,435,279.97.
Motion to approve the expenses claims as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to public comment. Anyone who would like public comment?
Good evening. Steve Hollifield, 6782 East, 100 South. I want to thank you for removing those two items for the decommission of road use. I feel these were better addressed. I've read those, no offense, Mr. DiMartino, but I don't understand lawyer talk. So if we do a special meeting, I would appreciate that so that way people would ask questions and they could understand it better. Mr. Haney, I'd like to request also, you, I sent you an email today, the Plan Commission Meeting Tuesday about this. Could we possibly move that ordinance to a special meeting so we don't have the catastrophe like we did the BZI meeting last time with people standing in the hallway, couldn't speak, couldn't talk, couldn't hear? We had people standing on the concrete outside, they couldn't hear and everything else. If you would consider that, please, a special meeting for that as well.
Sure. So next Tuesday's night, night's meeting?
The 27th, yes.
Yeah, there is one item, one item that's not related to the solar that's on the agenda. To hold a Plan Commission Meeting, it costs about $1,500 roughly between all the notifications, all the payments and everything else. So we're having that at the same meeting while we're having this, the meeting about solar. It's not just a regular Plan Commission Meeting, but it's actual public hearing.
Okay.
So it is a public hearing. It was advertised as a public hearing. It's been advertised now. We advertised it for about 45 to 60 days. That's why we had that long of a wait since the last one to meet all the statutory requirements. If we were to postpone it now, then we'd have to wait an additional roughly 60 days.
Because it's public hearing.
Right, because it's a public hearing.
So then the people will be allowed to ask questions concerning and get an answer how some lingo, what it works and what it means.
It'll be a full public hearing, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Sure thing.
And so normally, we don't do question and answers during public, public comments. But I will say this, and I'll make an announcement now, and we'll announce it again at the end of the meeting. We have decided to do it on September 15th at 5:18, so December 18th at 5:00 PM. And then we're going to have Scott Paycheck, the attorney who actually wrote it. And so we'll dedicate a whole hour to have the folks come in and voice their opinions. Public comment. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
A quick point of clarity, Madam President. You said we, we agreed to hold it when? September?
18th.
18th, okay.
5:00 PM.
At 5:00 PM. All right, I'm going to, I wasn't privy to any of those discussions or know anything about deciding on that, but I'd be happy to make a motion to set a, set a special workshop for September 18th at 5:00 PM for the Board of Commissioners.
We don't have to have motions on these for, we just plan them.
Well, as President, you could call when sure, but I, I'm sorry, I maybe misspoke both times. You said we decided, and obviously, we, we as a board decide here at public meetings, not in private behind closed doors. Just, just trying to keep things, that's fine.
Are you done? Can we continue? Thank you. Okay, moving along.
So.
Public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment? Come on up.
Good, good evening, Commission. My name is Timothy Powers. I currently live at 2934 North Clark Street, Chicago, although I was a resident of St. Joe County for the past 14 years. Just for good introduction, I am a Development Policy Manager with Innovator Solar. We're a solar company based in South Bend across the way. We work in development and as well as engineering procurement and construction. We've developed about 750 megawatts in the last 15 years of our history. I wanted to address briefly the current solar ordinance, which is going under revisions in front of the Planning Commission, which I know will be in front of you guys soon enough. First of all, I want to say thank you for passing a strong ordinance back in 2021. We found this very, very strong in welcoming to solar developers, but also fair to residences in the community. It meets the highest standards for quality, safety and project operations, which we've become accustomed to in the industry, working for quite some time in the state, but also Currently, your ordinance states that solar, your ordinance states that solar projects should be sited and constructed in a way that is harmonious and even benefits agricultural uses in the county. I'd like to say that we always strive to have this as the highest priority with our operations and our development practices. We like to have setbacks for noise generating equipment, for instance, residential buffers as well as pollinator friendly plantings. These plantings specifically have studies which show that they support strong biodiversity and are much better for erosion as well as soil health than standard farming practices for much of the land. We have an aspect, we have one aspect of the current revised solar ordinance, or solar introvisions, which the Planning Commission again has currently regarding the setbacks. We have concerns that these could negatively impact feasible projects development in the county going forward. To be brief, longer setbacks require us to lease more land for the projects, but it's land that we can ultimately use and are still paying for. This rises, raises significantly, can raise the cost of, the cost of power that's sold from the project. It makes it very difficult, if not unfeasible sometimes, to secure a competitive energy contract for purchase of that power. I think, you know, it's been publicly stated quite a bit previously that local utilities, both inside the state and outside, are looking for these power contracts. So there's significant demand currently for Northern Indiana for in-state solar, which obviously benefits Hoosiers, creates local jobs, you know, all those items. So given the recent discussions, hearings around the projects in the county, we, just to summarize some of the benefits briefly, you know, there's a million dollar, several million dollars in tax revenue that can come to county infrastructure such as roads and schools. And these taxes can also allow the county to avoid needing to raise local property taxes down the road in the future. So given all this, we'd like to propose that the county consider implementing a minimum standard of 75-foot setbacks with the ability to determine on a project-by-project basis any additional setbacks along different parcel boundaries bordering any areas of concern. I know there's been quite a bit of attention to residential setbacks and setbacks from residential buildings. We're certainly open to significant setbacks from those properties. It's our concern that this could be transferred and expanded to ag land, roads, that kind of thing. So in closing, I just ask the Commission strongly consider the long-term setbacks or the long-term impacts of crafting a workable solar ordinance and the revisions associated with it, which allow for responsible, harmonious development for these projects in the county. You know, there's a lot of benefits, obviously, which has gone out many times and been publicly stated. So just letting you know that I will make myself publicly available for comments and feedback and any follow-up questions that you may have. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more.
Yes, it looks like you have someone at the podium. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commission. My name's Patrick Follencamp. My current residence is at 1913 McKinley Avenue in South Bend. I grew up in South Bend and still live there to this day. I'm a project manager and pre-con and operations for Innovator Solar and EPC and solar developer based out of South Bend. Growing up in South Bend and working on the Honeysuckle Solar Project that's located in New Carlyle, I know firsthand the social and economic impact solar projects have in our local communities. For five months in 2023, Honeysuckle had 250 workers on site every day. 75% of that workforce was from the local region, including the LaPorte County area. These individuals range from journeymen to young men and women getting their first real-world work experience, working underneath experienced tradesmen. And our projects aren't limited to single trades either. We have electricians, mechanical contractors, operators, civil contractors, landscapers, just about any trade you can think of, they have their hands in the solar projects. Having worked in commercial, industrial, healthcare, and now solar construction, I can say there's no safer type of project for a young professional to start learning the different trades. There's very minimal work at height with large open areas. There's less of a chance for struck by accidents to occur, which according to OSHA, those are two of the biggest risks in construction. Again, this makes solar a great option for somebody beginning their career in the trades. In addition to that, it's less invasive to the local community as other sources of, or other construction projects. There's little to no light pollution. The only noise pollution is at the very, very beginning of projects when piles are going in the ground. And then dust pollution is greatly mitigated by seed going down before construction even begins. There's economic reaches outside of just the solar farm as well. I can tell you during the Honeysuckle Project, you could go on to New Carlyle and see a handful of workers from the site spending their time and money at local businesses just about every single day. Personally, my time at Honeysuckle, I developed professional relationships with local businesses and contractors. I was able to purchase my first home, and I developed a skillset that's becoming more valuable as the renewable industry continues to grow. And all of this goes to say that I believe broad ordinances and guidelines for solar projects are not beneficial to our local communities. There's a lot of steps and conversations in the development and construction project, construction process of these projects to ensure these projects are done responsibly and correctly. Broad ordinances do nothing but shut down those conversations before they even have a chance to happen, and thus takes away the economic and career development opportunities, opportunities for our Indiana communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Justin Keel, LaPorte County Councilman. I'm here tonight to talk to you about my expense reimbursement for travel you authorized back in January. As you recall, at your January 17th meeting, you voted 3 to 0 to approve my travel request to attend the National Association of Counties Conference in Washington DC. I noted then that my airfare and conference admission costs were already covered, and that I was seeking for the county to cover only lodging and meal expenses. I estimated at that time a total cost of $550, and in reality, it came in lower, and I submitted for only $364. Normally, attending this conference would have been several thousand dollars, and this is what we've paid to send other elected officials in the past. So this is an opportunity for me to represent our county and learn about issues impacting county government at a significant savings to taxpayers. I submitted my receipts for reimbursement on February 28th, a week or two after I returned, and to date, I still haven't been paid. During the January 17th meeting, I suggested that expenses may be able to be paid from the elected officials' training fund. Nobody corrected me during that meeting, and we all later found out that a very narrow restriction requires that fund only be used by councilmen for state-called conferences and not for a national conference. It's a nuanced distinction, and we all know better now. Ordinarily, the Commissioners decide whether, where travel expenses would be paid from administratively. You do this routinely for in-state travel by other employees and officials. And since that hasn't happened administratively, I'm asking you this evening to vote to direct Miss Gonzalez to submit my expenses for payment from the employee education and training budget, which as of the other day, had about $9,500 in it.
Thank you for your public comment. Moving on, anyone else for public comment? No one else for public comment? Public comment is closed. Department head comments.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jeremy Sabecki from the Parks Department. I just wanted to update you on a project I've been working on with, the Parks Department's been working on with the DNR and Mr. DiMartino recently. It's been working on for a couple, year and a half now, but we're getting to the point where things are starting to happen. So the, the DNR project out at Bloom that's going to acquire 43 acres, basically, we're at the point of, of a purchase option that's been agreed upon and will be, the Parks, we're holding a special meeting for the Parks Board Tuesday at 5:00 PM at Red Mill that will sign that purchase option and an affidavit, and also an affidavit that, for non-compliance on an oil and gas lease from 1939 that was never, never really used, but in order for this all to take place, we have to get that through the books. But anyway, that, that, the Park Board, we're looking to get the Park Board permission from the Park Board for the President or Vice President to sign the, the purchase option so we can exercise that option going forward. If you remember, this project is the one where the DNR will be basically buying the land or paying for a conservation easement that will buy the land, and then they will do the restoration work, put in the trails, and then the land will be ours at no cost to the county. So this is a 43 acres added to Bloom that will be a nice stream restoration and wetland project, and then trails as well. So it's a, it's a, it's a win-win for the county. So just wanted to let you know about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for the update.
And thank you, Mr. DiMartino, for working with us and making sure we're getting all our i's dotted and t's crossed. So thanks.
Thank you. Department heads. Any other department heads?
Good evening. Mike Seitz, Office of Economic Development. Just like to update you with our housing project situation. We are having pretty good progress. Carlton Bishop, my colleague and I, and we're identifying different properties that are available for housing development throughout the county, and putting together a pretty good list of those properties. And now we're in the process of identifying builders that we could possibly contact and let them know of the available properties that are available for development, housing development. We did not have a meeting this month of the Joint Task Force of St. Joe County and LaPorte County. We're going to, as I stated last time, we agreed to meet every other month, so we will be meeting next month, and we'll give you an update on, on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Darlene Hale, LaPorte County IT Director. I just want to take this time and thank all the Commissioners and the council members for getting us finally back into our space up on the third floor. You know, we're getting some kind of normalcy back to our department, and, you know, it looks wonderful, and, and thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Any other department heads on Zoom?
Commissioners, we have another thank you, actually, here. Yesterday, we received a letter from the Center Township Trustee Lisa Pierzakowski. She could not be here tonight, and she asked me to read this into the record, if I may. I'll just stay here, if that's okay. I could go to the podium if you'd like. This is dated yesterday. "Commissioners, Lisa Pierzakowski, Center Township Trustee. Commissioners, I am sorry I am not able to make the meeting in person to thank you. I want to thank the Commissioners, especially Commissioner Mazinski, for getting the road finished at 400 West. This has been a work in progress, and for Commissioner Mazinski to take off where Bill Hager left off was greatly appreciated. It has been a long time coming, but to see it built and finished is a huge accomplishment and will save many lives from future accidents. Myself and my department are very grateful for the new road!" Exclamation point. "Sincerely, Lisa M. Pierzakowski, Center Township Trustee, LaPorte County." And I'll turn this over to your, to Diane.
It's amazing it's taken that long, and she's right, that started with Bill Hager. Just ran into so many things, but I would like to suggest that under the sign that says 400 West, a small sign honorary Bill Hager Way or Bill Hager Trail, I mean, it'd be a good tribute to the guy for as much as he put into it.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Do we have a second? I'll step down as President in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Point of order, which one is it? Bill Hager Way or Bill Hager Trail?
Way.
Way.
And I'll talk to the Highway Department tomorrow. So moving on.
Madam President, I have one, an item here is to follow up on from, from public comment, and emails from Councilman Keel from earlier, previously, I suppose. I don't see any issue with paying or reimbursing, I should say, Councilman Keel for his, for what we had approved out of the regular, out of the training fund that he mentioned, the employee and training fund. We regularly pay out of that. There's still money left in that. That money from that is going to be used to pay for other travel expenses for other elected officials, including councilmen and commissioners throughout the rest of the year. So I would make a motion to, to pay that, or to reimburse Councilman Keel for his 300 and some odd dollars he, he has already submitted for his Washington DC trip from earlier this year, and pay that.
So are you looking to add this to the agenda?
I'm looking for a second for my motion I just made.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
What, what is the dilemma here that this didn't get paid? Help me understand this. He requested it out of the wrong fund, is that?
Well, again, I think we need a motion in a second to have a discussion.
That's true. Mr. Mazinski, in order to get it on to discussion.
I'll second the motion then.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, open for discussion. So I will tell you, I've been investigating this, and I just finally got some new information today at 5:01, actually. And so I still have it under investigation, but, you know, he's not unique to the situation. Again, he faults us when he speaks about this because he says nobody told him any better. But the reality is, is that when he came to us, they actually came at 3:15 the night of the meeting. So with absolutely no notice, normally what we do is we ask all our department heads to submit paperwork to our secretary. Our secretary actually puts it on our agenda, and agendas are put out two days before the meeting. He rushed through this because it was, for whatever reason, and, you know, when you say that it's not going to cost us, but then it ends up costing us, then it's a problem. I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight because, again, you know, there's been a lot of changes done in the auditor's office. They actually made a change to our accounts, and from what I'm seeing here, 611. And I'd like to know why those changes were made, and I don't think it's appropriate when we don't have, we don't have the availability when I've just come across this information tonight. So, again, I know that there's a motion in a second, but there is investigation going on, and if there's anyone else that would like to make some comment on this, we can take a vote.
Sure. I do recall during that meeting, Councilman Keel had brought up the reason for his late request is that he was already in Washington DC at the time, and he learned of the opportunity. So rather.
Actually, Commissioners, if I may, I was not in DC at the time. This was the month before the travel.
Oh, I apologize.
Recently, I came last minute was because the opportunity was made available to me at last minute, and that was the last Commissioners' meeting for me to be able to ask at before that travel. So that's why it was last minute, which I explained at the meeting, and you still voted on it 3-0 nonetheless. There was a comment about me saying that it wasn't going to cost money. I said straight up at the beginning that it would cost probably about 550. It came in at 364. So I actually came in less than what I represented during the meeting.
Well, you know, again, we, that's not the only one that's under investigation. We have one that was not paid out from December 11th of 2022. I actually went on a trip that was state called, and I ended up getting billed for So I think that as we're investigating this one, I'd like to reinvestigate this $449 one that wasn't paid out from 2022, and then we'll submit them, and then we'll, we'll figure out how we can, what is supposed to get paid? What is state, what is state called? Do we pay for only state called? There's a lot of questions here, and there's no ordinances to go along with this, and we're going to have to investigate on these.
Can I make a recommendation at this time? I would recommend that maybe somebody vote to table this issue, because if you vote to deny it, in the past, our county, once something is denied, it has been denied. So, but you all can do what you want to do.
I could theoretically just withdraw my motion as well, which would satisfy that. I do recall there was, there was an issue with that in, in 2021. I remember when I, when I took, when I took office as President of the Commission in January of '22, I did look into it, I did investigate that. And at the time, I had asked you for a, just a folio or a copy of a receipt or bill from, from that hotel stay so that we could get it resubmitted to the auditor's office. I actually offered personally to hand carry it down to the auditor's office so you would get reimbursed.
And you did.
But I, I, I never, you never provided me with a actual, with a copy of the bill.
Moving on, what are we going to do? We have a motion and a second.
Which was the issue?
We'd like to take.
There's, there's two different issues. There's one that we have a full, fully documented reimbursement procedure, and then the other is, we, there's, with, with your hotel stay is that there's no copy of your bill or folio.
You're going into something that, again, we have a motion.
Well, you brought it up, which is fine.
We have a motion and a second.
But all you have to do is submit the receipt, and I don't think anybody's going to deny paying. You just have to give us the receipt to show you actually stayed there.
We gave the receipt, sir.
Hold on, at this point in time, I believe Mr. Haney withdrew his motion.
I withdrew my second.
And he withdrew his second, so you're going to do your investigation, and you all can revisit this.
Okay. Moving on.
If you provide the folio or the receipt, maybe we can just get this all.
But we also have to look into ordinances to figure out what's state called and what's not state called, and how, how they get paid.
Okay.
True. And state called is for state called events, which is a different fund.
On to request, consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriations for juvenile services center for the fire protection, and those are within our packets. It did go through well source. Basically, what she's asking is just to approach the council for funding. Second thing would be the complex basement. There was water damage there, and we need to just go through the mitigation end of it, and then we would go ahead and take that out to bid. Garbage pickup, they know that they're going to be short from now to the end of the year, about 13,400. She needs permission to go before the council for that. And then the fire door at the Small Projects Building, the state fire marshal came out and inspected those buildings, so we had to pay for an actual inspection and then the repairs.
I'm going to second this. I do, I do have a question here, though. So you said the Johnson Controls were sourced through Sourcewell for that 285,000, which is the government procurement, is that, is that the government procurement agency that was used? I'm trying to remember the name Sourcewell.
Right here it is. Sourcewell contract number 030421.
Very good. Thank you. And then the other, the other question that I, or at least concern I have here is for the mitigation work here. It's just under the 50,000, kind of requiring some quotes, and there's no reconstruction work in there, which, of course, would bring the price up. But if additional demolition work is required by the industrial hygienist, additional costs will be incurred. So when I look at this, seeing as how close we are, especially, generally speaking, our industrial hygienist has been pretty thorough, done a pretty, done a pretty good job. They've almost always come up with additional work that needs to be done. My concern here is, is this may be crossing over the $50,000 mark that would need some quotes. I don't know if we have anybody who could give us a good answer on that here tonight, but we're, we're right, we're at 49,000 and change here, and that's putting us right up at that limit with the information down here below. I'm pretty sure almost anything that pushes over 50 grand.
So the hygienist did come out, and they've already given us and submitted the reports. So there is no, there won't be another hygienist come out until we start the project, and then the project will not be started until it goes out to bid. This is clearly just for mitigation.
Point of order, Madam President, the.
We made a motion, and we don't have a second, and here we are.
No, I did second it.
The motion was for them to approach the council. We don't have the money. The council has the money. They want to approach the council for the money. That was our motion.
And I seconded it and asked some questions. That's all.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
Moving on. Consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriations for annual computer replacement.
Eric Fenster, Lepore County MS. We have an annual replacement program for all of our IT stuff that I work with Darlene on. This year is our tablets from our ambulances, so we have 13 that use pretty much every day. We're starting to have some charging issues and just general failure of those due to batteries and everything else, so they're, they're due for replacement. So at the September meeting, with your blessing, I'd like to approach for funding for that. Also, I'll have some items under our donation and public outreach. We kind of got cleaned out during the fair, so we just need to restock some of that stuff. And then I don't think I'll maybe have to do it at September, but maybe October, we'll have to ask for some more money for overtime and fuel, just so you guys know. I mean, it's every year, we get down to crunch time there at the end of the year, and we're still trying to see if we can stretch some, some monies there, but we'll, we'll probably have to ask for a little bit more as long as you all.
Motion to grant permission to go to the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And I'd like to echo Darlene's comments, too. Thank you. It's nice to be back upstairs and out of the basement and kind of get that normalcy, like she said. She doesn't like it because I'm right next door, so I can pick on her a little more when we need stuff. But it's definitely nice to be back up there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We have no old business. We'll move on to new business. Consider acceptance of comprehension plan update contract. Mitch Bishop, our county planner.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
And as you are aware, county received a $140,000 grant from NERC, and that covers 80% of our 20-year comprehensive plan update. And tonight, before you, is the contract, the county council, I went before them a couple of months ago, and they already gave us the 20%. So this is the fulfillment of that, of that contract. The Antero Group won that job, and we hope to start the project in November. There's some things we still have to do, namely, receive the PO from Endot so we can start that work, so we have funds available to pay the contractor. But it was reviewed by your attorney, and it's before you tonight. Any questions?
Did there be one signature or three?
Three.
It's three.
Motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
All right. Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you. Consider acceptance of Bridge 189 contract for engineering services.
That's also a grant received. That went through Endot, through the federal highway, passed through the DNR, to the county. And that was also scored recently, that and Bridge 46. These are both bridges, this is Bridge 189. This is south of La Crosse, between La Crosse and the Kenkey River on 2300 south. Again, this was scored, and we do have a winner, and it's before you tonight. And again, they want to probably get working on it at the end of the year, so we need to get the ball rolling so a PO is cut and we get the job going.
Motion to approve.
Second. I was really excited on this one, too, to see nine different companies, roughly nine different companies submit to do work here in Laporte County.
Yeah, the bridge, the bridge work especially, but we've been seeing quite a bit, quite a few. So it's a little bit more to score, but hey, more competition, you get a better price, so.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks.
Good job.
Consider appointing Laporte County project manager as project manager to scope and solicit bids for complex windows.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to second it. I do have, I do have a question. We're scoping and soliciting bids for a complex, for the windows. Why, is there a reason why we're not, why we wouldn't have maintenance source these, what's, what would be sealed bids from directly and how, directly through our facilities department?
So we've had issues in the past when we've hired some of the contractors, and quite frankly, this work, we really do need somebody to manage the job, make sure that they're working with the different power lines, the power companies that have the lines that are right up against the building. It's going to require scaffolding or lips, and for us, it's, you know, after, you know, talking about this, it would be better off if we had a project manager on it. Any other discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Fortunately, I'm going to have to vote no on this one. I definitely need some more information before I could send this one out. I think it's probably something we could do in-house.
Okay. And then we're, we pulled the last one off, so we're set.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.